And I'm here to talk to you tonight and ask for your vote on April 4th. A member of the Columbia Public Schools Board of Education for six years. I'm here today for the third three-year term so I can participate in what I think is an amazing institution called Columbia Public Schools for a total of nine years. We have been very successful over the last six years and I'm proud to have been a part of it, but we have work to do. We have challenges that are facing us because we're growing. People want to be in this community and we provide a wonderful education for our children, but we have to be mindful and responsive to the needs of our community as we grow and communicate the things that we need to do to make sure our students continue to receive a second to none education. We also have to be mindful of the changes that are coming down at the state and the federal level with regard to funding. We have been good stewards of taxpayer money in this community for a number of years. We've been transparent with the things that we need to do and that we should be doing and that we want to do with the funds that we have. But we need to plan and we need to plan ahead. Things are changing for us and we need to make sure that we are responsive and in a position to respond to those changes and maintain the programs that our students need and continue to grow and provide them with the education that they deserve. Was that a yellow?
The first one came up, I think inadvertently.
In any event, I'm here because I believe that Columbia Public Schools is truly the foundation and the backbone of our community. Without Columbia Public Schools, we wouldn't have people talking about recruiting physicians for Boone Hospital because we have a great school system. This is one of the things that we bring to this community when we have the support that we have with our voters. When our students need us, we're here. And my job as a Board of Education member is to make sure that our students continue to have the opportunities they've had in the past and that they grow into the future.
Listening to two-minute opening statements by our school board candidates, the next one to speak is Paul Cushing.
My name is Paul Cushing, as you know already, and I don't know how I'm going to follow that up. You know, I could just say that whatever Helen said was what I'm feeling. I've been, I'm completing my first term, full term, on the Board of Education. It's been an incredible learning experience. The things that this school board does range from building new buildings, obviously, to, you know, feeding kids, to educating. And I'm just continuously amazed by what we can do as a district, as a school district, and working with the school, other school board members, constantly humbled by what they bring to the table and their thoughts and their empathy for our kids and parents. And I've learned quite a bit based on all of that. So, you know, I'd like to run again and my biggest reason is because I enjoy it. I enjoy working with everybody. I have three years of experience now, so I feel like, you know, I'm a valuable, well, not maybe valuable, but a big part of what's going on and I think I could be effective. That's my primary goal. You know, there's so many things to talk about, vocational education, that I'm passionate about. I went to vocational school. It's made life work out very well for me. I don't have a college degree, but on the way, I've learned what I needed to make a successful career. Just, you know, I just, I just want to say that I hope you'll vote for me, but I think it's not time to say that. Thank you very much.
Opening statement now from Jonathan Sessions.
Good evening. Thank you all, thank the League for having us every year. It's always a great event. I'd like to thank the listeners, KFRU, for putting up with me not only this morning, but also this evening. Dave, I hope this doesn't impact any numbers in the wrong direction. I, most importantly, thank everybody for coming out and thank everybody for listening. I asked for your vote on April 4th. I am, I've been on the Board of Education for seven years. When I ran for a one-year term, similar situation to what's going on with the Boone Hospital trustees. I ran to complete a term when I was, I first filed when I was 26 years old. I don't have any kids in the Columbia Public Schools. I grew up in the Columbia Public Schools. I'm committed to the Columbia Public Schools. Columbia Public Schools is the system that allowed me to be successful, gave me the opportunities that I have, gave me the enrichment that you don't find in communities around ours. And I'm thankful for that. If you hadn't figured it out, I was born and raised here. I'm a third-generation Colombian. I went to the University of Missouri Columbia. I earned a degree in elementary music education. And I'm a small business owner here in Columbia. I do IT and computer repair. Columbia Public Schools is the fuel that empowers a community. Dr. Stiefelmann and I went and visited another community where we heard a spectacular speaker and he shared with us that communities with the best schools win, and I have no doubt of that. People want to be in Columbia because of our school system and I want to be, I want to continue to be a part of what makes Columbia Public Schools successful. Thank you.
Now the opening statement of Robyn Dianix.
Thank you. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters. I'm very excited and proud to be here. I am a little bit different than all three of these candidates. I am a parent and I have a lot of concerns and I am hoping to be able to come to the Board and bring a parental perspective. I believe in thinking differently. I believe in our children. Our children want to be loved. They want to have fun. I believe in our teachers. Our teachers have a passion to give and to make better their students' future. I believe in our parents. They want to provide for their families. They want their children to be and do better than them. I believe in our community. Columbia is made up of good people who want to help each other. None of this is thinking any differently, right? But I'm in pursuit of these beliefs. I like people. Technology is wonderful. The Internet is wonderful. We could engage in ideas through email or through phone, but none of that is going to take the place of meeting with somebody in person where you can gauge how they are feeling and thinking and whether or not they are hearing your message and agreeing with you or having anger as a result. We need to be able to have more face time. You cannot replace these human interactions, these experiences coming together in connections over computers. We must be in pursuit of what we believe in, and that is human interactions. I see our children excelling. I see our teachers empowered in the classroom and happy at home. I see our community rallying to be mentors and volunteers who will work together to make education great for all of our kids. Again, it's because the connections people make with each other. We need to make a change for education to be a human experience. Isn't this our future? It must be our future and I would like your vote on Tuesday, April 4th, Robyn Dianix for School Board.
We're going to start with questions and we'll start with Helen Way to answer the first question. And this comes from the League of Women Voters and this is a really good League of Women Voters question. How does the CPS teach basic concepts regarding the Constitution and democracy and voting? And what recommendations would you have for the school board if elected?
Columbia Public Schools makes it a part of their curriculum to ensure that our students understand the building blocks of being a citizen of this country. Understanding where our Constitution comes from, understanding the vision that our founding fathers had for our country, and understanding how those concepts apply today. Linking history with current events is something that I think our teachers do an excellent job of doing in our history, our social studies, and our civil relationship-type classes. One of the things that I think is very difficult about a public school is managing to provide our students with a diverse perspective in terms of the issues that are confronting them in the news potentially, and relating that to what they're learning in the classroom. It's always a challenge to ensure that our students are receiving the information and are free to process it and give their opinions about what they're hearing, especially when it relates to topics that they might be questioned on or tested on in their classes. In terms of recommendations for Columbia Public Schools, we make data-driven decisions when we're on this Board. We rely heavily on facts. And in order to ensure our students receive the best education, we have to make sure that the materials that we use, the curriculum that we teach, and the information and access to information we provide truly result in student achievement.
Paul Cushing will be next. And again, the question is how does the CPS teach basic concepts regarding the Constitution, democracy, and voting? And what recommendations would you have for the school board if elected?
Well, I know we have classes that deal with those issues specifically and, you know, I'm going to parrot what Helen said for the most part is, you know, we do teach those topics. As far as, as far as understanding what we could do to make that better, there's always room for improvement. You know, it sounds, that sounds ridiculous, but it certainly would be a good way for us to interact or interface with parents to understand what they want or what they talk about with their children. And I think that we can do a better job getting that, although we do very well with our surveys and things like that to try and get our parents to give us feedback on where we need to go. So, thank you.
Jonathan Sessions on that question.
Ms. Way was very correct and aligned with how we currently teach all of these topics. One of the biggest challenges that we're facing right now is the backing end to the response of the way that we're accessing our news, the way that information is being presented. In a world of fake news and alternative facts, how are we providing our students with the resources to research and then evaluate the research that they have gathered to see what is accurate, what is inaccurate? That is one of the biggest challenges beyond all of the things that we currently do teach and our students do take a civics test, which is significantly more rigorous than what the state would like for us to take here in Columbia Public Schools or would like us to present here in Columbia Public Schools. But it's all about making sure that our students are able to determine fact from fiction when presented it.
All right. On that question, we go to Robyn Dianix.
I fully support teaching democracy from a more traditional perspective. I would rather not see the way a lot of times, and I'll just say what I've been hearing. So, in some of our U.S. history classes, what is happening is there's personal bias being delivered, even though the teacher is supposed to be apolitical, they are delivering their own bias in the classroom and the children then are having a very hard time from what they hear, what they read, what their own research is saying versus then what their teacher is saying. I think that we need to be able to present the information to them as unbiased as possible so they can make their own decisions and be able to bring that conversation home to their parents and be able to say, hey, this is what I'm learning. What do you think about this? And engage in a real dialogue rather than a fight with their parents about, well, that's not what my teacher said. My teacher said you should think this way. So, thank you.
Paul Cushing will have the first answer to this question and it comes from one of the audience members. I think it has a lot of levels to it, so again, you'll have to kind of find where you want to answer this in 60 seconds. How will public schools adapt to the needs of society that go beyond current curriculum? We're starting to kind of address that anyway in some of your answers, but they're giving examples like economic disparities, racial, gender, and social bias, innovation in food production, virtual education versus desk-tethered teaching. So again, the question, how will public schools adapt to the needs of society that go beyond current curriculum? Paul Cushing?
Well, you know, my whole take on what Columbia Public Schools is about is what parents and our community wants. As a board member, it's my job to listen to what the community says and then bring that back to the Board and work with administration to try and, you know, as a group, and all of us, we have to do that. You know, specifically, some of those things that were listed, I'm not sure belong in K-12, but certainly sustainability and, you know, is important, you know, as a lesson. We're already, you know, working on one-to-one, computer-to-student program and I've asked, and we're getting a study from MU this year on how that is really working. And, you know, we embrace technology. I embrace technology in my job, you know, a software engineer, and sometimes I question the value of it. And so I want to make sure that our students are actually getting the most out of it.
Jonathan Sessions?
That is a lot to unpack in 60 seconds. I saw a little device that sat under desks aimed for elementary school students where their kids could just pedal and while working at their desk and I thought I'd have, would have had a lot fewer angry teachers as a child had I had, you know, had been provided with one of those to just burn off energy. That said, you know, when I think about this question, I think of it in the perspective of our champion words, and that's AEO. You'll hear that from CPS over and over again. Achievement, enrichment, and opportunity. We need to make sure that all of our students have an opportunity for everything that we're doing. I do not want to be in a school district where it is pay-for-play for the enrichment opportunities. I don't want to be in a school district where sports and arts are frivolity. I want them to be an important part of the curriculum because they're absolutely necessary. And I want to make sure that every student has the opportunity for those elements. Again, I could go on for a long time, but I saw the stop sign a few moments ago.
And before we go to Robyn Dianix, let me just refresh our memory on the question. How will public schools adapt to the needs of society that go beyond current curriculum? I'm not going to give you the examples that were included on the question. I think you remember those, but Robyn Dianix, your answer, please.
Thank you. I have to agree. I have two very energetic little boys and I think if they had the bouncing ball they could sit on. You know, there's a lot of little boys in our community that would be great with them. One of the questions in there, it had to do with virtual teaching. I am a advocate for that in certain circumstances where the teaching can be led through an online service and the teacher can get feedback then from that online service and be able to deliver one-on-one particular attention to each child so they know exactly where they are messing up. I mean, think back to when you learned fractions. At what point did it finally make sense to you? And each child is different. When we talk about equality of all of our programs, one of the things that was brought up to me is there's a block scheduling issue and some of our kids don't have the same program equality as some of the other kids in the other high schools because they don't have the same schedules and therefore can't get the same programs. So this is something that I would like to see, just like Jonathan mentioned, we need the program equality that is very important.
On that question now, the response from Helen Way.
I may have put the question a little bit differently. What I hear is a question about the adaptation of a school to matters that go beyond the core subjects that are being taught. And what I hear is how are we going to deal with the threats that are being presented to inclusion in our schools? How are we going to make sure that our students welcome every single student into their classroom, into their building, regardless of their race, regardless of their religion, sexual orientation, gender, or socioeconomic status? How do we communicate that as a district to our families and our stakeholders to make sure that no matter what might be rhetoric out there, that's something that we value in this community and something that CPS places as a primary objective within our, not just our curriculum, but within our culture as a whole? Also, one of the things that I heard as well is sort of evolving technology and how do we address the needs of society to be able to utilize that kind of technology? Something we do is integrate technology into core subjects and into core teaching. I see a stop sign, so I'll stop and I might finish a bit later. That's a good question.
I have another question that I think is kind of an interesting question. As I read the questions that I was provided ahead of time by the League of Women Voters, this is the one that piqued my interest and I won't make any other editorial comment on it right now, but I'm going to read it as it was written. Jonathan Sessions, you get the first crack at this one.
Couldn't have done this this morning.
This was a good one. "The CPS Board's current approach to new school construction and growth rewards and encourages suburban sprawl and directly contributes to the resegregation of our schools. The Board has unrecognized and unrealized potential to shape the future of our community through thoughtful school facilities planning and placement. What would be your approach to more thoughtful planning and placement to address the issues of urban sprawl and resegregation?"
This is an important question. Oh, we get 90 seconds for this one? All right. This is an important question. As someone that lives in Central City, I am someone that is actively opposed to urban sprawl. I was a member of the Conference of Plan Task Force and was a, I am a big champion of the urban service area to help restrict urban sprawl and make sure that we don't overtax our, just our city infrastructure and as a school district, create a larger burden on that. So that's part of the question. The other part of the question is the socioeconomic segregation that we face, which is related to our racial segregation in our Columbia Public Schools. We do struggle in the Columbia Public Schools. It is difficult to find the space to build a school at the capacity that we need as in a community that is growing as rapidly as we are in the city and then create an attendance area that meets all the pie-in-the-sky dreams that we have of a walkable school district and neighborhood, the neighborhood feel of the school, and then meets the demographics of our community so that when you walk into that building, it feels like the room we're in right now. And I could go on for more and I'm seeing a stop sign. So what I can say is how, and how I'll finish that is, it is something that I'm aware of. It's something that as a part of policy, we try to be champions of making our schools representative of our community and I'll continue to strive to make that process better.
Robyn Dianix?
I don't need you to repeat it. Thank you. I think we have really missed the boat when it comes to planning for the growth and the progress of Columbia. I think if you've been living here long enough, you've been seeing it grow over time and we were all just waiting to find out what's going to happen next. Why is Columbia not moving forward quick enough as far as schools? I think that investing in our core schools that we had to begin with was probably the number one priority that needed to happen and that could have been done by demoing a school and building it even grander and bigger than it is now instead of trying to put kids into a school that is falling apart and patching things as we go. You look at Battle High School and it is just the Taj Mahal of all schools. Good Lord, if we could have used some of that money to put towards some of these other schools in town, that would have been fabulous. Instead, we've got this great big school and there's nothing that can compare to it. It is much cheaper to demo than it is to keep adding on. And I know a lot of people that are familiar with real estate understand that, especially with some of the areas that the space is very limited. It's cheaper to build up than it is to build out. And so why were we not considering some of those things? I'm also a big fan of redistricting one time, not every couple of years, as we see fit. We're just going to keep moving our kids over and over and over again and they'll get used to it. They'll be fine moving schools. They're not fine. People are fighting back as a result. That's why I got involved and wanted to run. I'm tired of seeing our kids move from school to school to school. It's hurting their social and emotional health because they're having a very difficult time making lasting relationships. Thank you.
Helen Way.
There are some realities that contribute to the circumstances we find us in. Land is where it is and the buildings that we have now are where they are. And when we look at a map of the city of Columbia and we look at where the growth is in our community, it is our job to respond in a mindful and thoughtful way to the growth that we know exists to ensure that our kids have access to classrooms that aren't overcrowded and that they have access to equitable facilities. If we don't respond to growth where we find it, we aren't responding to the needs of our students and that isn't doing our job. We do need to be willing to be creative. We can't cast aside any solution that might present itself just because it doesn't fit with our traditional logic of how we address growth. If it makes sense to use an existing building in a different way, that's something that we have and will continue to explore. But the fact of the matter is, we still have to respond to the needs of our students when we see growth in certain areas of our community. In addition, to address the real underlying problem of being really positive by this question, it requires education and that is what we do. One of the things that Columbia Public Schools has been doing for a number of years now is focus on equity training, not just for our teachers, not just for our staff, but for our students, to really develop an understanding of the biases that do exist inherently in each and every one of us to really combat the issues that face our community and to really, really come up with solutions that promote true inclusion, true equity, and true community feel no matter where you are in this community.
Dealing with the question about more thoughtful planning and placement to address the issues of urban sprawl and resegregation, Paul Cushing, you have the final answer to this question.
Well, first of all, developers don't ask us permission on where they can build. Okay? So, you know, we're very lucky to live in a community that is growing. A lot of Missouri communities aren't and we weathered the storm even during the worst parts of 2008 in the recession. So with that said, developers put houses, neighborhoods where they want. The city allows it and Columbia Public Schools has pretty much zero recourse, zero influence on any of that. I grew up in Florida, in central Florida, and I went to double sections of high school because our community was growing so quickly, there wasn't enough room in the school for all four grades. Florida is progressive in a lot of ways. Impact fees are one of the things that new developments have to pay to make sure that when the schools need to build, they can, they can, you know, have the money or they can have the property in which to do so. Unfortunately, that stuff has to come from the state. And I say this to people all the time, the school district, you know, as a whole, is at the end of the line as far as lawmakers, as far as, you know, when schools need to be built and how, you know, how we manage, you know, based on what's provided to us. So, you know, I wrote down a bunch of notes at that time, but, you know, the impact fee was a good one. I was on the, last year I was on the long-range facilities planning and so I got a little glimpse of how things have to work and I got a stop sign.
Your opinion on the corporate intrusion into our schools for the purpose of fundraising?
I think fundraising in our schools is important to an extent. There gets to be a point when you've asked too many times for money. I'm not familiar with the exact fundraising programs that are being asked about, but I think that if the schools needed the money or whoever is asking for the money, then there should be one, one time a year where you're fundraising. I am a big advocate though for reading rewards. I think the more that you can inspire a young child to open up a book, the better. Now, I'm not familiar with exactly what's happening to get them to open up this book, but yeah, thank you.
We are a public institution that is bound to provide equitable access to all of our students. We're also grossly underfunded. If we were funded at a level that we should be funded, we wouldn't be having some of the discussions we are having today about alternatives to the traditional public educational system. So how do I feel about it? I resent the fact that it has become a necessary evil to make sure that we have the kind of funds available that our students deserve. Having said that, I think that it is a mistake to a certain extent to allow a corporation to use the forum of a public school as an advertising mechanism. to use the form of a public school as an advertising mechanism without there being an equitable benefit, an identifiable benefit, to the students that is tied to the achievement of those kids.
All right. Paul Cushing?
Advertising is everywhere. You know, we follow what Helen says. We'd be foolish not to take advantage of that in some way, as long as it's done deliberately with good thought, you know, about how we're doing it and not, obviously, you know, overstimulating the kids with advertising. You know, we did, I thought immediately of our sports venues and, you know, a couple of years ago, we had Kelly Sports Properties, and we've kind of removed, we broke our contract with them, and we've moved on to managing that ourselves, and it's been very, much better for us because, you know, we're taking more of the money and the less money is going to somebody else that would be, you know, taking a percentage. So, I think from, from that standpoint, I think that we're selective. We have policy in place that limits advertising and, and make sure that what we, what we do, you know, isn't prohibitive or isn't negative in some way. So, you know, yeah, it's, it's not the best, but based on, you know, current economic climate, I think it's an opportunity for our kids to reap some additional benefits.
Jonathan Sessions?
I agree with Helen. It's frustrating that we have some of the nights, especially considering like some of the things that I think they specifically reference, things like big teacher nights, that don't truly bring in a lot of money to Columbia Public Schools and is yet spaced around more getting someone to eat somewhere than actually supporting public education. It comes back to the play-for-play, pay-for-play argument from my perspective. We shouldn't have to be, our parents and our teachers and our students shouldn't have to be running around fundraising to make sure that they can engage in enrichment opportunities in our district. We did have the Kelly Sports Property with a Sports Properties Management, which was an advertising program, and what I did like about that program was it helped eliminate a lot of the running around that parents and students and teachers have to do and minimize the advertising while simultaneously evenly spreading those funds between our athletics programs and our fine arts programs. So, I'm glad we have solutions like that, but really, I want to be in a place where public education is funded to the level that all students can participate regardless of outside funding.
Final question, we'll start with Helen Wade, and just give me the yes or no answer to this and then maybe a sentence to explain that. Do you support keeping cursive writing as part of the core curriculum?
Absolutely. Absolutely, I do. And there's a good reason for that. There are, there is data that suggests that when one, when students write down their notes versus typing them on a computer, they tend to absorb and retain that information better. I do. I remember when I was in law school, I would make, you know, the little note cards, and I'd write it down, and I'd write it down again, and there was something about the act of writing it that really made a difference for me. There's a second, very quick reason. I want our kids to be able to read historical documents. I want them to be able to read the Constitution. I want them to be able to read the Bill of Rights. I want them to be able to read old speeches that great leaders have given, and if we don't teach them how to write in cursive, they won't be able to read it either.
Paul Cushing, do you support keeping cursive writing as part of the core curriculum?
Yes, absolutely, I do. I haven't learned it, so. In all reality, I mean, I could echo everything Helen says. I think it's important, I think it builds, you know, a certain amount of hand-eye coordination, and, you know, I'm no educator, but what I do know is that there is value to that. As much as there is value in learning how to type and your keyboard skills, you know, learning, you know, cursive writing and printing, and, you know, it's all, it's all very important. And, you know, so from there, I can, I can just say yes.
Jonathan Sessions?
Yes, it's absolutely an important skill to have for all of the reasons mentioned before, and to reiterate what Mr. Cushing said, at some point, we've been advanced to making sure that our students can touch type word in a society where that is an absolutely necessary skill. So, that's the next important part in reading and writing, and it's absolutely necessary.
Robyn Dianix?
I agree with all three. I would like to send my husband to this cursive writing school. I cannot read his writing. I also have a personal story. Back when I was in business, I asked a young man to sign his name on some of his HR documents, and he didn't know how to sign his name. He printed it. And maybe it doesn't need to be a year-long course, kind of like keyboarding, it's, what, nine weeks, something like that. Maybe it's a little bit shorter, but at least they need to learn it so that way they can read it, be able to read these historical documents, but most importantly, be able to sign their name and not just print it.
We'll start with closing-minute comments or closing statements, and we start with Robyn Dianix and work our way back this way.
Sure. I just wanted to reiterate, I believe in families. I think families are the most important part of our, our public school system. I have two little boys. They are firecrackers. And when I was struggling, I reached out to a community of moms, and this community of moms embraced me. They helped lift me up, and that's what I would like to do, is create a community of parents that want the same things for their kids. The next three years of education policies in Washington are unclear. There's a lot of opinions going around. They're making decisions that'll impact our schools, but what shouldn't be unclear is our direction as a community who supports education and families as a number-one priority. And we must make sure as school board members that we hear and see the impact of our decisions. That's where progress and confidence in our public school system will come from. The less you see and hear the impact that your decisions make, the more damage that can be done to our teachers, students, and our schools. This disconnection cannot happen. I would like for you to vote for me on Tuesday, April 4th. I am the candidate that will be talking to you a lot.
Jonathan Sessions, your closing statement.
Jonathan Sessions, I'd like to thank all of you all for coming out tonight, and again, I'd like to ask for your vote on April 4th. I've grown up here, I love Columbia Public Schools, and I've dedicated to Columbia Public Schools. Over the last seven years, we've made a lot of accomplishments. We've opened up Battle High School, which, while an impressive building, it's an impressive building that's made to last in the same way that Hickman High School has been there for 100 years and Douglas High School has been there for 100 years. And I don't have any plan to tear any of those buildings down anytime soon, and in the same way that I expect Battle to be there for 100 years. We're a community that loves public education. I love public education, and I will continue to support public education, no matter what comes down from a federal or state level, all of the threats that I think we're all beginning to see of public education, know that I will continue to be a champion for public education here in Columbia, Missouri. Thank you.
Paul Cushing?
I have a funny story. So, I'd be, I didn't accept any money or not going to accept anybody for this campaign. And my stories about yard signs, I bought them the first time I ran and stored them in my garage when I picked them up, and my stepfather used them for tomato plants. So, I don't have any more yard signs, but in all seriousness, you know, when I was first in the board, you know, I had all these ideas. And one of, one of the people that's made the, you know, huge influences is Mrs. Neese, and she's in the audience there. And what she told me was, Paul, we're here for the children. And, you know, it resonated with me, and I know I've said it, some of you probably heard me say it before because I've said it over and over again, but it's really true. And the reason why we're doing what we do is to make sure kids get educated so they can do something when they graduate. They can go to vocational school, go in the military, go to college, whatever they want to do, as long as we provided them with the tools, then they should be able to do it. And I think we do very well at that, although there's more work to be done. We have some schools that aren't doing as well as we'd like, and I think that we want to focus on some of that as we finish our building boom. So, you know, I feel privileged to be a part of this organization, and I hope that you guys will vote for me and allow me to do it for three more years.
Helen Wade?
My name is Helen Wade. Thanks for listening. Thanks for coming. I, of course, am asking for your vote again on April 4th, and I'm asking because I care about Columbia Public Schools. I am a parent, but that's not why I sit here before you today, and that's not why I've been sitting before you for the last six years. It's because our public schools are a valuable commodity for every single person in this community, not just parents. It's about a backbone, an economic draw for this community. It's for business owners. It's for grandparents. It's for students. It's for parents, and it's for community members. We have a lot of work to do over the next three years. We have a lot of challenges to face, and the experience that I've had on Columbia Public Schools prepares me very well to meet and to overcome those challenges. Lastly, I will say, I'm very proud to be a part of this community, to see.